Good evening, I want to call this meeting of the Durham City Council to order at 7 o'clock on October the 7th, 2019, and certainly want to welcome everyone here tonight. Before I proceed further, I'm going to call on Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you, Mayor Shul. Un anuncio chiquitito si necesitan interpretación, hay alguien atrás que tiene equipo y le puede ayudar. Gracias.
Will you translate, will you interpret for the rest of the crowd?
Yes, thank you. If you need interpretation equipment, the person is standing in the back of the room and they can offer you interpretation equipment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Is that only in Spanish?
Correct.
I'm now going to ask if you would please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. I should have said, because before I began the meditation, because I was meditating on this person's passing, that today we had the funeral, and I was honored to be able to speak at the funeral of a wonderful member of our community, Omega Curtis Parker. Ms. Parker lived a long and amazing life. She was, for 40 years, an employee of Durham Public Schools, she was a librarian and media specialist. I was honored to be able to serve on the school board with Omega. And when she was elected in 2006, she brought an incredible sense of peace, dignity, goodwill to the job. When I would go to schools with Omega, we went out every week, every Friday we would visit schools, and what made her different from the rest of us was this: In every school that she went to, a teacher, or two teachers, or a custodian, or a principal would come up to her and say, "Ms. Parker, you were my librarian at Little River School." Give her a hug. She was our ambassador. She was really, when it came to the school board, she was our queen. And we have lost a wonderful member of our Durham community, and I just wanted to remember her tonight. All right, we'll now move to the Pledge of the Flag, and Councilmember Reese, if you could please lead us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and colleagues, good evening, everyone. If it's your practice to do so, and if you're able, please rise and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Alston.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Thank you very much, and now we'll begin our ceremonial items. Our first ceremonial item tonight is the Durham Neighborhood College, and I have a few remarks that I'd like to make about that. First of all, though, I'd like to see if there are members of the Neighborhood College here who would like to join me at the podium. Do we have Neighborhood College? Yes, we do. So I'm gonna just make a few remarks, and if one of you all would like to speak on behalf of the group, I would love to have you come up and do so briefly. For more than a decade, the city and county of Durham have hosted Durham Neighborhood College to help residents learn about local government and ways to get involved. Tonight, we're very pleased to be joined by several members of the 2019 Durham Neighborhood College. City council meetings are one of the many ways to stay informed and to be heard regarding current issues in our city. And so we're glad that all of you all could be here tonight, be a part of this meeting, and we welcome you to join us again in the future. We thank you for caring about our community and for proactively learning more about your local governments, so you can play a more active role in your neighborhood and your city. We're very glad to have you here tonight, and if one of you all would like to come and speak briefly to the folks here, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Sean Lamonte. This is my first Neighborhood College experience. It has been an engaging and thoughtful event, and I'm lucky to be a participant, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And of course, we're looking forward to having you all back in as many city council meetings as you'd like to come to. Our second ceremonial item is for Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Javiera Caballero if she would join me here to make this presentation, and I'd like to ask Amanda Castillo Hernandez and Patricia Obrigan to please, both residents of East Durham, if they would please join us with anyone else that you would like to bring up tonight for this presentation.
Por cuanto el mes nacional de herencia hispana se celebra anualmente del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre para celebrar las historias, culturas y contribuciones de ciudadanos estudiantes con ascendencia de España, México, el Caribe y América Central y el Sur. Por cuanto el tema del mes nacional de herencia hispana de 2019 es hispanoamericanos una historia de servicio a nuestra nación, que es un llamado a nuestra nación de que las personas hispanas han desempeñado un papel vital en la sociedad, incluyendo su legado de tradiciones, y por cuanto la ciudad de Durham abraza a personas de herencia hispana y reconoce que estaba esta población ha tenido y continúa teniendo una influencia profunda y positiva en la ciudad de Durham, y por cuando la ciudad de Durham ha contratado a una población diversa de personas, incluido el 4.2% de su fuerza laboral que se identifica como hispana o latina, y por cuanto el Consejo Municipal de Durham, por primera vez en su historia, incluye una persona de herencia hispana, y por cuanto el Comité Hispano-Latino del Alcalde se estableció en el 2002 para promover la comprensión y inclusión cultural, y se convirtió a un comité oficial de la ciudad de Durham por el voto unánime del Consejo Municipal el 5 de octubre de 2015, y por cuanto la ciudad de Durham se compromete a buscar mejorar las oportunidades existentes y abrir nuevas puertas para los residentes hispanos y latinos en la ciudad de Durham, fomentando así comunidades inclusivas con recursos y oportunidades equitativos. Y ahora, por lo tanto, yo, Stephen M. Shul, Alcalde de la Ciudad de Durham, Carolina del Norte, por la presente proclamo el 15 de septiembre de 2019 hasta el 15 de octubre de 2019 como el mes de herencia hispana en Durham, y exhorto a todos los ciudadanos a ordenar las distintas tradiciones de la comunidad hispana y sus contribuciones a nuestra ciudad, estado y nación al participar en ceremonias, actividades y programas relevantes. Testigo mi mano y el sello corporativo de la Ciudad de Durham, Carolina del Norte, este 7 de octubre de 2019. Now in English. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated annually from September 15th through October 15th to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens with ancestry from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and whereas the 2019 National Hispanic Heritage Month theme is Hispanic Americans: A History of Serving Our Nation, which is a call to our nation that Hispanic persons have played a vital role in society, including its legacy of traditions, and whereas the city of Durham embraces persons of Hispanic heritage and recognizes that this population has had and continues to have a profound and positive influence in the city of Durham, and whereas the city of Durham has hired a diverse population of persons, including 4.2 of its workforce who identify as Hispanic or Latino, the Durham City Council, for the first time in its history, includes a person of Hispanic heritage, and whereas the mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee was established in 2002 to promote cultural understanding and inclusion, and became an official committee of the city of Durham by the unanimous vote of the city council on October 5th, 2015, and whereas the city of Durham is committed to seeking to improve existing opportunities to open new doors for Hispanic and Latino residents in the city of Durham, thereby fostering inclusive communities with equitable resources and opportunities. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2019, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Durham, and hereby urge all citizens to honor the distinct traditions of the Hispanic community and their contributions to our city, state, and nation by participating in relevant ceremonies, activities, and programs. Ahora voy a invitar si ustedes quieren decir unas palabras. I'm inviting folks here if they would like to share some words with you all.
Buenas noches a todos. Estamos honradas de recibir la proclamación del mes de la herencia hispana. Es un honor aceptar en nombre de la comunidad latina de Duran. Nos da mucho orgullo representar una comunidad trabajadora que ha llegado a este país a salir adelante para darle a una mejor vida a nuestras familias. Estamos agradecidas de la ciudad de Duran que nos toma en cuenta y por sus esfuerzos en incluirnos como miembros valiosos para esta ciudad. Esperamos que esto sea solo el comienzo de una gran unión entre la ciudad de Duran y nuestra comunidad latina. Muchas gracias.
The translation of the comments. Good evening, we are honored to receive the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. It is an honor to accept it on behalf of the Durham Latino community. We are filled with pride to be representing a working community that has come to this country to progress and to provide a better life for our families. We are thankful that the city of Durham takes us into consideration and for their efforts to include us as valued members of this city. We hope this is only the beginning of a great relationship between the city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you to our interpreters. And I want to say, we, earlier today, this afternoon, for a couple of hours, we had our first Spanish-language-only event at Durham City Hall. And it lasted from about 4:30 to 6:30. We had city departments all out with all their services, and we had lots of our Latinx neighbors who were here to see what we do at City Hall. There were tours that were given in Spanish, and it was a really wonderful evening. And I want to thank Carmen Ortiz and all of the people who organized this wonderful event, so it was fantastic. Next, we're going to have a presentation for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I believe Councilmember Deidreana Freeman is here to help me make this presentation. This will be presented to Tony Hayes, the tribal chairperson, and Vivette Jeffries Logan, citizen of the Okanichi Band and the Suponi Nation. If you all could come forward and bring anyone else with you that you would like to join
Thank you. I'm honored to share this proclamation once again, and unfortunately, I don't see Tony Hayes, I'm sorry, Tony Council or Vivette Jeffries in the audience, and so I'll make sure that they do receive this proclamation. Recognizing that Indigenous Peoples' Day is actually next week, Monday, and we don't want to be late, we want to be early. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native Nations of the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in America, Americas, and whereas the city of Durham recognizes that the indigenous people of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immor- immoral, immor- yeah, immorally. And whereas the city values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' known labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the sincere cultural contributions that have sustainably shaped the character of the city of Durham, and whereas the city of Durham is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards indigenous people in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty, income inequality, exacerbated disproportionate health, and education, and social crises. And whereas the city promotes the closing of the equity gap for indigenous peoples and the prevention of extinction through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity, and honor our nation's indigenous roots, histories, and contributions. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2019, as Indigenous Peoples' Day, declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Durham, encouraging other institutions to recognize the day, and reaffirming the city's commitment to promoting the well-being and growth of Durham's American, indigenous, and Indian communities. Witness my hand on the corporate seal of the city of Durham, North Carolina, the 7th day of October 2019.
And our final ceremonial item tonight is World Food Day, and this will be presented to Bob Newlin, Treasurer of the Durham Crop Hunger Walk, and any others that he may want to bring with him up to the podium. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Mark Anthony Middleton if he will do the honors.
My thanks to his honor, the mayor, for allowing us to participate in what is perhaps the coolest prerogative of his office, so I always count it a privilege to be able to do this. Whereas the United Nations declared October 16th as World Food Day in honor of the founding of the Food and Agriculture Organization, and whereas Durham Crop Hunger Walk, Durham Congregations in Action, and Church World Service are partnering with Durham Restaurants to feed our neighbors, and whereas Neighbors Feeding Neighbors is a day when partner restaurants generously donate 10% of their proceeds to Crop Hunger Walk, and whereas Durham Crop Hunger Walk supports 12 hunger-fighting organizations in Durham and international hunger relief programs around the world, and whereas Neighbors Feeding Neighbors restaurants include Benettis-Athena Restaurant, the Tayuan Grill, Jimmy John's at Patterson Place, Kickback Jack's, Neo China, Parazad, Puccinella's Italian Restaurant, Picnic, Sushiaki, The Refectory Cafe, and Zuley's Kitchen, and whereas Durham Crop Hunger Walk is a great opportunity to spend time with family and friends, enjoy great food, support local restaurants who support their community, and feed their neighbors in need. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2019, as Neighbors Feeding Neighbors Day in Durham, and hereby commend its observance to all of our citizens.
Neighbors Feeding Neighbors was the theme of the Crop Walk two years ago, and we sat down brainstorming, and we said Durham is a foodie city, and we would like not just walkers to get involved, but the restaurants, and so we have been recruiting restaurants to join us, and I hope that all of you will go out to eat at least once on October 16th at one of our participating restaurants. I have flyers here if you want them, but I also note that durhamcropwalk.org/neighbors has the latest lists of restaurants who are participating with us. So I hope to see you at one of those restaurants on the 16th, so that Urban Ministries and our other 11 charities that we support here in Durham, and Church World Service, which works to alleviate hunger around the world, will have a little bit more in their coffers.
That concludes our ceremonial items, and I want to thank everybody who was here Alrighty, I'll now ask if there are any announcements by members of the council. Councilmember Reese, and then Councilmember Freeman, do you all say? Yes, Councilmember Reese, and then Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tomorrow is primary election day in the city of Durham, and if folks live in the city of Durham and did not take advantage of early voting, tomorrow is your last chance to make your voice heard in this year's primary election for the Durham City Council's three at-large seats. In even-numbered years, Durham elections are all about big national elections for president in U.S. Congress, state elections for governor, attorney general, the state Supreme Court, and state legislative races, and elections for county commission and school board. But during odd-numbered years, Durham's city elections take center stage. In fact, we're the only show in town, and that gives us the opportunity to have a diverse, wide-ranging, and robust conversation about the kind of city we want to be and how we want to get there. Tomorrow's primary election will narrow the field of candidates from the current field of 10 to six, with the top six vote-getters tomorrow moving on to the general election to be held on November 5th. So if you haven't already voted in early voting, tomorrow's your chance between 6:30 a.m. and 7:30 p.m. at the precinct voting location in your home precinct. You can visit decovotes.com, that's D-C-O-votes.com, to learn where that is in your precinct. Make a plan about when you plan to vote and how you plan to get there, and cast your vote tomorrow to make your voice heard in this primary election for Durham's city council's three at-large seats. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I just wanted to draw attention to my T-shirt this evening, it's a Keep On Pushin' T-shirt by Boss. It's a Keep On Pushin' T-shirt by Boss, actually a local group in the community that's been working to try and support those young men in the streets who are deciding not to return to gang violence, and recognizing that the work that they've been doing, similar to a lot of other folks in this community, is not always valued in the same way that nonprofit organizations that are set up is valued. I want to make sure that we're honoring the dignity of those who return from a life of crime to decide that they want to help others return and do something different. And so I just wanted to lift that up and say thank you to Michael Wright, who actually just walked in. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Alston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in addition to Councilmember Reese's announcement, I think we talked about this at our work session, but I wanted to say here for folks who are listening that, as far as I know, our buses are running fear- oh, no, that was- got it?
General election.
General election, okay.
A general election, we'll be having free bus service for everybody.
Once we vote tonight.
Once we vote tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening to everyone in the chamber. Mr. Mayor, it's very easy with all of the drama coming out of Washington, and with our own drama with our local elections, and I want to thank Councilwoman Reese for reminding us of our sacred duty to vote. But with all of that going on, I think sometimes it's very easy to lose sight of some other things going on, and I just want to let citizens and residents that are here in the chamber and watching at home know that we are still mindful, that there's still gunfire going on in our city, and that there are still issues in our community, and even in the midst of drama from Washington and our local elections, the business of the people goes forward. I want to call everyone's attention to an initiative going on this week called Bull City Ceasefire that a former mayor or candidate, Ms. Shay Ramirez, is spearheading. I want to call attention to any effort, any effort that anyone's doing at the grassroots level, not just from this chamber, but at the grassroots level, to address the issue of violence in our city, particularly gun violence. I also want to remind folk that we have agreed as a council to push forward on a discussion about a task force, and I look forward to leaning into that work in the very near future, and want to reassure folk that we are not unmindful of the issues that still face our city. Finally, Mr. Mayor, on last week, I took a late-night ride-along with one of the members of the Durham Police Department, and I want to thank Officer Mark Judy, who works Beat 411 in District 4. I was reminded why I will never do that type of work, and the week before that, I rode with the Fire Department. I was reminded why I would never do that type of work either. But we had a very dramatic moment when a call came in on the radio while I was in the car of an armed robbery that had just taken place minutes from us, and Officer Judy goes blaring down the street, sirens blaring and lights, and I'm holding on for dear life. He stops and he jumps out of the car. The alleged suspect is walking past, walking by, he believed to be walking by, and jumped out of the car and approached a gentleman, and took off. Guy took off, and he ran into the darkness behind him, and I was left there in the car by myself. Wonder if I should call for help. As he ran off into the darkness, I have to be honest, I braced, because I didn't know what I was going to hear come out of the darkness. The alleged suspect got away, but a gun was recovered, a gun was dropped, and it was said on the radio that the person had a gun, and I'm thankful that no one was injured and no one was hurt, and it didn't end in a headline that so many of us are familiar with in this country, and I'm thankful that one less gun that would be involved in a commission of violence or crime in our city. My point, Mr. Mayor, is that there are people working on this issue at all levels and in all areas, and I just tonight want to thank and honor those that are in the streets and in our communities, working at the grassroots level. I don't care what your philosophical divide is, this is an all-hands-on-deck issue, and if you're working on it, I want to thank you for it. I also want to thank our first responders, and the men and women who work in our police department and fire department, and our emergency medical services as well, and I'm not doing the job, so I'm thankful that there are some people that are doing it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember. Any other announcements by members of the council? All right, thank you very much. We will now proceed to priority items. First, for the city manager, sir, any priority items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, mayor, members of council, no priority items from the city manager's office this evening.
Madam Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam Mayor Protem. The attorney's office has no priority items this evening.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. The city clerk's office has no items.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that the council has worked on previously. They can be, the consent agenda can be approved by a single vote of the council. Items can be- Items can be removed from the consent agenda by any member of the public or a member of the council, and if so removed, will be taken up at the end of the meeting. I will read the consent agenda items. Item one, mayor's nominee for appointment, Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Item two, Audit Services Committee Oversight Committee Appointment. Item three, Program Income Performance Audit dated June 2019. Item four, Changes to Employee Pay Performance Audit dated June 2019. Item five, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Return of Excess Program Income Community Development Block Grant CDBG Funds. Item six, Durham Community Land Trustees, Inc., DCLT, Loan Modification Request for West Park Apartments. Item seven, Durham Community Land Trustees, Inc., DCLT, Loan Modification Request for Morehead Glen Apartments. Item eight, merger of City and Durham and Durham County Demand Response Services Agreement. Item nine, ordinance to establish Fair Free Day on General Election and General Municipal Election Days. Item 10, FY 2020 Agreement with North Carolina State University for the Development, Enhancement, and Maintenance of the Triangle Regional Model TRM. Item 11, Old Chapel Hill Road, New Hope Creek Crossing Waterline Replacement Professional Services Contract Awarded to High-Fill Infrastructure Engineering PC. Item 12, Bid Report, August 2019. Item 13, Cooperative Group Purchase Hybrid Police Vehicles. Item 15, Contractless Center for Documentary Studies to Support Full-Frame Documentary Film Festival.
Mr. Mayor, can I pull that item?
Item 15. Item 16, Contract with American Dance Festival, Inc., to Support the American Dance Festival 2020. Item 17, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fair Housing Assistance Program Funding, and we have, this has been pulled by a member of the public, so we'll pull item 17. Item 18, Made in Durham Contract Modification for Youth Program Services.
Pull that, Mr. Mayor.
Item 18, we'll pull. Item 19, Contract Amendment Number One with Summit Design and Engineering Services, PLLC, for Contract ST 295 Request for Qualifications for Professional Land Surveying. You have heard the consent agenda, there have been three items that have been pulled. Those are items 15, 17, and 18. Can I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of those items?
I'll move it second.
It's moved and seconded, that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of those three items. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
And the motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to item 14, Update of Disposition Process for 505 West Chapel Hill Street, and I have a statement I'd like to make about that, and then ask the councils, for the councils.
Mr. Mayor?
Action.
Could I briefly?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I apologize for needing to do this, but late last week, I was made aware of a situation that is at best tangentially related to this agenda item that I feel like I need to make my clients, I mean, my colleagues, the two competing developers and the general public aware of. I've consulted with our city attorney, and she's concluded there's no financial interest that would allow me to recuse myself of participation in this decision, but I did want to make this statement before we begin our work on the agenda item so that folks could know what in the world I'm talking about. Four days ago, I received a call from Joyce Fitzpatrick of Fitzpatrick Communications, Incorporated. This is a communications firm that I believe is located in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'd never met or spoken with Ms. Fitzpatrick before that call, but I knew that she and her firm had been providing communication support services for the better part of the last year to Row Incorporated, the business of which my wife, Dr. Laura Helms-Reese, currently serves as CEO, and of which our family is part-owner. Over the course of the last year, my wife has spoken to me more than once to praise the work performed for Row by Fitzpatrick Communications. During last week's phone call, Ms. Fitzpatrick informed me that in addition to her work for Row, she had also been engaged to perform communication services on behalf of the Accridge Group in connection with their proposal to develop the former headquarters of the Durham Police Department at 505 West Chapel Hill Street here in Durham. Ms. Fitzpatrick told me that she thought I should be made aware of her simultaneous work for Row, our family business, and the Accridge Group. Ms. Fitzpatrick also told me that she believed the Accridge proposal was excellent. We then said goodbye and ended the call. Immediately after hanging up the phone, I sent an email to our city attorney, Kim Rayburg, describing the facts above and asking for her determination about whether or not a financial interest existed that would warrant my abstaining from any vote concerning the disposition of the property in question. Our city attorney, Rayburg, ultimately concluded in an email to me the following day that there was no such interest, and that abstention was not allowed, and her conclusion was, in quote, "It is clear that the fact that Accridge and Row have both engaged the same communications firms for their independent business needs does not create any sort of financial interest for you within the meaning of the council procedures or council's code of ethics," end quote. Finally, just for the sake of clarity, in North Carolina, members of a local city council must vote on an item when there is no disqualifying financial interest or other reason to abstain. So under these facts and pursuant to the guidance and conclusions of our city attorney, I may not voluntarily recuse myself from casting a vote on this matter. My participation in the voting is mandatory as a part of this body. I apologize for taking up so much time of my council colleagues, developers, and the members of the general public for, as I said, what seems fairly tangentially related to this matter. I just felt it was important to be as transparent and aboveboard as possible about this particular situation, and I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate that explanation, and I'm glad that you made that clear. Council colleagues, like you, I have received new information from Accridge, one of the developers who would like to be chosen to do the project that this item refers to. An email that came on Friday midday, and I have only today been able to read it. This email has important information that I would like to take time to digest and need time to digest. We have in the last few days heard from other individuals as well, without a chance to have any of this new information appropriately vetted by staff, and without a chance for us to read and digest the information and to give it to the serious attention it deserves. And that includes this afternoon, we also received new information from a representative of the Fallon Group. At the same time, the city attorney and I have received a communication from another representative of the Fallon Group concerned that Accridge has been adding it to its proposal outside of the agreed-upon RFP process and questioning the fairness of that. Therefore, I got together with the city manager this afternoon, and we consulted about this situation and the process, and in consultation with the city manager, I'm going to recommend the following process and timetable to the council for our decision on this matter. This is a timetable that will, I believe, guarantee absolute fairness to both of these development groups, and will provide the time necessary for staff and council members to do our jobs well. I'm recommending that we go back to a process where the developers are dealing with their staff rather than with individual council members, as is our practice here in Durham. I'm recommending to the council, with the support of the city manager, that both development groups be given until close of business on Friday, October 18th, to provide any more information or amendments that they would like to propose to staff. After this date, the staff will have time to review and vet the information and brief council members, as well as to prepare a staff memo in response to any new information or amendments they may receive from the developers. This would all be done with the anticipation that we would take this matter up again on Monday, November 4th, and vote on it that night. I recognize that there are people who have come from out of town to be here tonight, and I'm appreciative of everyone being here, but I think we have to take into consideration what's best for the city of Durham, and what's best for the city of Durham. In my mind, it's for us to be able to give this the absolute consideration that it needs, and to be able to digest the information that we have received, important information that we have received only recently. As I say, I've spoken to the city manager, and he's in agreement on this process and timetable. I would like to ask my colleagues to give their consent to this process, but first, I'm going to ask if there's any discussion on this proposal.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few concerns I'd like to raise.
Councilmember.
Just noting, I'm unfamiliar with how RFPs work, but I'm concerned that if your RFP is closed and you're accepting additional information, I don't know how all of that works, but is there a process that should be in place? Because this doesn't seem appropriate.
So it's not necessarily prescribed under general statute, but the RFP itself contained language, and I'm just going to read it. It said, "At any time during this process, the city reserves the right to request additional and/or supporting information from respondents in addition to materials included as part of the RFP response. Respondents will not be entitled to change their proposals after submission, except in instances at the explicit request from the city." So the agency, the city, controls the bidding process. Generally, we adhere to what's outlined in the RFP. My understanding is that's what has been done here. So, you know, if the city had requested additional information from respondents, that was communicated to them that that could be a reality, but then once the city says the RFP process is closed, it's closed.
Okay. And what was the date of that RFP process close?
I would have to defer to staff on the exact dates.
Could I ask any staff member present if they could look up that information and let us know?
I just want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for future issues. I mean, this is one of probably many RFPs we'd like to offer, and I would not like for the developer community to think that we're going to continue to go back and forth in this way where we're...
Fair enough.
Setting them up for failure.
I think while we're waiting for them to find that information, Councilmember, are there any other questions or comments that you have, and then we'll give staff a minute to find that.
I would like to know if we're going to open the meeting or open for comments for folks who have traveled from across the country.
My plan was not to do so. I think when we got all the information that we need, will be a more appropriate time, and we'll be able to have read it, and everybody else will have also been able to read the information, and I think that will be a more appropriate time. Ms. Poston?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Stacy Poston from the General Services Department. The date was June 28th. So we had an interview process. At the conclusion of the interview process with the two development teams that we invited to interview in Durham, we gave them five additional days to provide supplemental information around two items, the affordable housing component of their proposals and the financial offer of their proposals.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those questions, and good, very important concerns. I appreciate you raising those. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be very clear as to what we're agreeing to tonight, so a couple of questions. Within this period, is it within the purview of each developer to make substantive changes to their offerings?
I'm going to, I will give my thoughts on what I have suggested, and then we can hear from the city attorney. We have been getting substantive changes to these proposals outside of our regular process, suggested changes to these proposals. So my proposal is that we set up a process by which, essentially over the next, well, between now and close of business on October the 18th, that we give each developer the chance to bring any amendment that they would like to, yes, in a substantive amendment. People have been giving us substantive information, substantive changes, that they would both be given an equal chance to do that, and that that would happen within, between now and close of business on October 18th, after which, no more substantive changes would be accepted, and that this would come through staff, and that we would honor that process.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second question, I think I heard you say that they would deal directly with staff. Am I to interpret that as the council will not have any contact with any of these developers?
Obviously, we all have our own choices about that.
I just wanted to be clear about that, because developers call me all the time.
Yes, they call us all the time. Exactly right. And, you know, it's my practice to meet with developers frequently who have projects they want to talk to us about, as I meet with anyone who calls me in my office about anything. And so I'm certainly, I don't want to say that there should be any prohibition on that. I do think that we are in a situation where, that the, we have been hearing from developers, I don't want to make this a pejorative, we've been hearing lots of different things from the developers, and I would like, I think we would be better served if we can funnel this information to our staff. But of course, each individual council member has to make their own mind up about meeting with people, and I would not even pretend to make a decision for any council member about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other comments or questions? Anyone have any other thoughts that they would like to offer? If not, I think that it would be best to do this by a motion, and I'm going to ask for a motion, and I will, I think we would need a motion that we, that both development groups, Fallon and Accridge, be given until the close of business on Friday, October 18th, provide any more information or amendments that they would like to propose to staff, that after this date, staff would vet the information and brief council members, as is their usual practice, as well as prepare a staff memo in response to any new information or amendments they may receive from developers, and that we would do this in the anticipation that we would take this up again on Monday, November 4th, for a vote that evening.
Mr. Mayor, just a question about the date. Is there some specific reason why the 18th was chosen?
I will defer to the city manager. He and I discussed this afternoon what he thought would be a reasonable timetable.
So, Councilmember, the dates are, I guess, the November the 4th date, is that be four weeks from this evening? And felt like it would, you know, we're going to need adequate time for staff to review proposals. I don't know that, to the extent, I've not even seen some of what's been proposed, I don't know to the extent timeframe that developers, the developers need or have for whatever they want to bring forth, but I do know that the staff is going to need some time to review that. Quite frankly, I'd prefer that maybe to be even a shorter time without knowing what is going to be proposed, but it did seem like it was splitting the time between the developer and developer community, or the two developers and the city staff to complete that work.
And just then, do you feel like staff will be prepared, I mean, substantively prepared to evaluate based on changes made on an initial RFP? Do we need, I mean, will there be time for us to give additional, I guess, priorities? Like, I'm trying to understand exactly what might change between now and then, because I know staff made a recommendation at work session, and that's come forward, and now we're having additional information, and what are they evaluating that additional information against? Should they be looking, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not just pushing it out and actually like setting up some guidelines so that staff has a way to figure out what the priority is.
Councilmember Freeman, I don't anticipate at all that we're going to be modifying the RFP requirements or expectations. I can't predict what either of the developer teams would suggest, but I would also want to make it clear that I anticipate, you know, it would be a reasonable addition to their proposal if they're expecting any kind of a fair evaluation in such a short period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I might, before we vote. I just want to go on record, being very clear, because I want the residents and citizens of the city to be aware of what we're associating ourselves with. To this point, there has been no hard vote on any of the developers to date, so if there may seem to be some unorthodox air around this, even tonight, if we had taken action, we would basically be giving the staff permission to enter into negotiations, is my understanding. So it's not like we're taking anything away from something that's from someone that's already been given, which gives me comfort in allowing the process to go forward. So I just want to be clear that I think it's well within the purview of this council. This is the last opportunity this government will have to brand a major gateway to our downtown, and this should be a self-imposed deadline by us, who are the duly-elected representatives of the city, and we want to get it right. So with that said, I just want to emphasize that we're not taking anything from anyone. The one and two spots were staff recommendations, but the final disposition of this matter rests with this council, and with that said, I'll agree to the recommendation to extend the consideration period.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any more comments? Can I have a motion to support this?
So moved, to support the extension of the...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we, and I will state this again, that we give both development groups until the close of business Friday, October 18th, provide any more information or amendments they would like to propose to staff, that staff after this point will review and vet the information and brief council members, as is our practice, as well as prepare a staff memo in response to any new information or amendments they may receive, and that this will be done in anticipation that we would take this up again on Monday, November 4th, in anticipation that we would vote on it that night. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Not, Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you so much. I want to thank everyone that has come tonight. I want to thank our friends from Fallon, I want to thank our friends from Accridge, and I want to thank everyone else who's come. I know there are a lot of people here tonight to hear this. I think we need to, we on the council, I will speak for myself, and I think my colleagues by their vote have indicated that they agree, need the full and all the information that we can get in a way that's understandable, and that we need our staff to be able to vet this information for us. So thank you all for being here tonight, for those of you all who are here for this item. Thank you. We'll now move to item 15, and this item was pulled by Councilmember Freeman.
Yeah.
This is the contract with the Center for Documentary Studies.
Yeah.
Let's give a minute, sir. All right, Councilmember, let's go ahead and do it.
I just had a real general question, and that I missed, I think I missed something from this in the work session. I just wanted to know, the cultural advisory board and city's cultural public arts program specifically, are these the only, one, two, three, four, five areas that you look for in deciding on where funds go in these types of contracts?
Stacy Poston, General Services Department. So the structure this year is new. We looked at the process that had been in existence before. We entered, we met with Discover Durham's Festivals and Events Committee, and we redrafted the elements of the proposal, and so this year, the five elements that are included in the proposal are new and different and were the basis for the evaluation for all the proposals that we received.
And I wanted to know if it was possible to include something around race equity in this conversation, because I recognize that you're spelling out quite a bit, but it doesn't quite get to the area that I'm concerned that we're missing, and that I'm noticing there are a lot of events that are more Afrocentric that aren't supported by the city.
Okay. Certainly, we, this is, like I said, this is our first year that we've done this process. I'd be happy to take comments on that and include that in next year's thinking.
That was all.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments on this item? If not, I will invite a motion that we approve item 15.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve item 15, the contract with the Center for Documentary Studies. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 17, and we have two speakers on this item. This is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fair Housing Assistance Program Funding. We have two speakers, Tyrone Savage and Dennis Garrett. If you all could please come over here to my right. Either Mr. Savage here, or Mr. Garrett here. Seeing neither one of them in the House, Mr. Savage and Mr. Garrett, I will now ask if we have a motion on this item.
No.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the cooperative agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Fair Housing Assistance. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the Maiden Durham Contract Modification for Youth Program Services, item 18, and this was pulled by Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday of this past week, I received an email from a member of the community who had some questions about the work that Maiden Durham has done over the last year or so, and he requested some information. I provided him the information two, three days later. He reached out to me this afternoon, just before 5:00, and asked that this, that consideration of this matter be delayed so that he could fully review those materials prior to us moving forward on the item. And so I guess I wanted to bring that before the council and also ask staff what the ramifications would be of a delay of that type.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor pro temp, council members. I'm Adrienne Graham Scott from the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, and I have some comments regarding that contract with Maiden Durham. The work that Maiden Durham is engaged and has already begun. In fact, it's actually launched this month with the Durham magazine, which has an insert in it that speaks to our work-based collaborative. The work-based collaborative is an important, an important dialogue, an important engagement process whereby we are bringing all of the organizations that deal with work-based initiatives, youth employment, support networks together into one space so that we can have some type of collaborative approach to the way that we are finding and building the youth talent pipeline. The work has been begun. It's been endorsed by the Durham Workforce Development Board. It directly parallels with the initiatives and the goals of the Workforce Development Board, in particular with the goals to reach 600 internships for our Durham Youth Works Internship Program. As you know, we're in the process of an expansion, and the Maiden Durham work is directly correlated with the success of that program based on the activities that they're undertaking. It has also actually been presented to the council, the county commissioners, and a presentation just this morning was made to the county commissioners and received their support for the work that has been done. It's, it's the delay of the contract itself, it won't prevent the work from continuing to go forward, but the organization itself has financial commitments as well, and it does prove to form a financial hardship for them as they're moving forward in trying to achieve their goals on our behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Graham Scott. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I mean, the contract period really began July, or would begin July the 1st, to some degree, we're just catching up to, you know, from a compliance standpoint, so I would be concerned that, you know, I don't know what the concerns of this individual were. I don't believe I saw that email, Councilmember Reese, but I would be concerned that we not just pull it because an individual citizen had a question that they didn't have time to get resolved.
Just briefly, if I may, I don't know, in my time in the council, that I've ever received this kind of request from a city resident before, especially not about two hours before the meeting's supposed to start, so I wasn't really sure what my obligations are in this situation, but I determined to pull the item, explain the request that was made to me, and put it before my colleagues to see what y'all want to do. And I appreciate staff's input and the city manager also, and let us know that, but I think on the other side, and then I'll stop talking about this, that the matter, the item did go through the regular agenda cycle. It came through a work session, we had a good conversation at the work session about it. I see Casey from Maiden Durham is here and talked to us a little bit then, and so, in any event, that's what I had to say about that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments by any other council members? Councilmember Freeman?
I just wanted to note that I, I would love to hear more about the citizen that is requesting the pull of the item, and I would like to know more details about exactly what it is they're trying to get at. I serve as liaison to the Workforce Development Board, but I want to make it clear that I do not vote, and so I did not have a vote in moving the project forward or what have you, and so I have raised concerns as well, and I would like to make sure that we're actually getting exactly what we say we need out of the contracts that we set up, and so I know I just left the midweek conversation, and that was also a topic of discussion, and recognizing that when we're talking about black-owned businesses or what have you, if we're not setting up the criteria so that we're meeting that actual need, that we're not getting there, and so recognizing that, I know with Maiden Durham, there's been some concerns about whether or not the actual students who are being reached are the students that were set out, or that were set out in the initial work, and so I know that this concern has also been raised with myself, and so I have, I just wanted to echo the, I guess, the emailers' concerns around whether or not this contract should move forward, and I would support a delay as well.
I could just briefly, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sorry.
Councilmember Austin?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Maiden Durham.
There's been a motion that we authorize the city manager to authorize this contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Unready.
Unready?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to give everybody a chance, as always.
Okay.
Yeah, don't worry.
Actually, one of my, Councilwoman Reese was trying to chime in, but I respect the gavels prerogative.
I'm not going to jump in there and not let you have your moment. Councilmember Reese, and then Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I, if I could, I'd like to read a portion of the email so you can get a sense of kind of the flavor of the concerns. That might help some folks. The person who, the resident who requested the delay is seeking to better understand the justification for the continued financial support for Maiden Durham. Direct quote here is, "I fully support business engagement for youth and the need for an education-to-work pipeline system. However, Maiden Durham has substantially deviated in terms of service model and funding structure from what was originally initially proposed. In addition, the outcomes initially indicated by having optimal decision-making personnel on the Board of Directors has not yielded as many opportunities as there are youth applying for the Durham Youth Work Internship Program." In response to the email, the information that I sent this individual was the email that I sent each of you on the council prior to our last work session, which consisted of information relevant to the performance of Maiden Durham up to this point in time and their most recent contract that I received from the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, sent the full text of the email that I received from Casey Steinbacher, the executive director of Maiden Durham, after my disastrous Facebook Live session, in which I grossly mischaracterized the actual thing that Maiden Durham does, and was, she was very helpful to correct that in a very detailed email that I sent along, and I sent another email to him that I and the members of the Durham Crime Cabinet received in June of this year in responses to, in response to some concerns that this specific emailer raised at the Durham Crime Cabinet about the, about, on the same subject, someone from Maiden Durham reached out in June with, again, a very detailed explanation of what Maiden Durham actually does, how the money is spent, et cetera. But it was a lot of material, so anyway, that's really all the background I can give you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, my unreadiness was just a courtesy to my colleague who was trying to get the gavels attention.
No problem.
Ready to vote. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor that we approve the contract with Maiden Durham, and it has been seconded. If there's no more discussion, then I will ask the clerk to please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes five to one, with one member not voting. It's me. The motion passes six to one.
I believe a not voting is actually a yes.
Can we actually change that to a no?
Yes, you can. So I think, Madam Clerk, that the vote is five yeses and two nos.
Correction. The vote is five to two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Reese.
I don't often do this, but I just wanted to add that my vote no is in no way an indication that I don't think that the contract should have been approved, it's that I was trying to give voice to the resident who reached out to me to stop the delay, and so...
Thank you, Councilmember.
Really glad that it passed. Thanks.
Thank you. With no other business to come before this body, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned eight oh three.